All right, Ian Thomas here with Hook Magazine, sitting down with Jason Morris, unaffiliated candidate for Board of Education in New London. Jason, how goes it, man?
Beautiful, how about yourself?
I'm doing all right, doing all right. Can't complain too much. So, we'll get right down to brass tacks here. One of the most intriguing things about your campaign is the fact that you've insisted on running as an unaffiliated candidate. What was your rationale for choosing that route?
Well, I had come from a long line of, say, questioning party politics and rules and the rules within those parties and having such a division between people. I really don't like the idea that, hey, our ideas are better than your ideas wholly. So, things like stereotypes as well, that, you know, one side is always this or another side is always that. I am just interested in non-partisanship. My entire time advocating for this district since last spring, 2012 it is, I've gained friends from all sides, all parties. Every single party was interested in me running with them this season. But because of party rules and because of party politics and some stubbornness, it just wasn't going to work out. Each one wanted me, some of them only wanted me only on theirs. But because I needed to do non-partisanship, need to show how I could cross all lines, I gave myself the option of either I'm on all three or I'm by myself.
Understood. Why is non-partisanship so important to you as a political philosophy?
Because I don't agree that we should be beholden to a party. I think we should be beholden to the people that voted us in there, the people that give us a call and take part in their democratic process. An email, a call, a text, talking to me on Facebook. I've made myself very available to our entire city so that I could become a voice for the city and for parents and people like me.
Gotcha. And what's the response been in general?
When I'm out there and I was getting my signatures for the campaign so that I can get on the ballot, it was very good. A lot of people were like, hey, you know, anybody should be able to run. A lot of people were like, oh, you're not with the party? Let me sign. Where do I sign? And a lot of people had a lot of respect for it, you know, in every single party that came by. There was, out of all the people I talked to, probably less than a handful. And I got over 110 signatures. Less than a handful were like, oh, no, thank you, you know.
I see.
Just that they weren't really interested, but it's fine.
Did you come across anyone who said, "I was not going to vote, but now that I know that someone like you is running, I think I'm going to"?
Yeah, actually a few people so far.
Yeah?
Yeah. There, you know, a few people around town that aren't necessarily much involved as usual, but once you get talking to them and, you know, I let them know that I'm, hey, by the way, I'm a candidate and, you know, please vote for me, but they're like, what, you're a candidate for, what do you mean? And then I say, would you vote for me? They're like, yeah, you know, I'll go for you. Great, thanks.
Nice. Well, that's good to hear. That's inspiring. All right, so, good questions. What are your top three concerns for New London in regards to the Board of Ed educational system?
Well, we have a huge shift going on right now with the Magnet District system. We're returning all of our schools into Magnet schools. Every school's going to have a lottery. Every school is going to have 25% of out-of-towners, 25% minorities, which in our town is whites. And that's going to bring in possibly $9 million into our district. The rollout of that is going to be looked upon by a lot of people. The governor is interested in this district. Obviously, our representative, Andrew Stillman, is interested in this district. She's the chair of the Education Committee. The Commissioner of Education is very interested in this district. A lot of people are looking at New London and saying, okay, they're going to become a Magnet. They're the only one in the state to become all Magnet. We need to see, we need to see how it goes, you know, is it going to succeed? If it does succeed, how did they do it? If it doesn't succeed, what were the problems and how to fix that? And really fundamentally, is it money that's going to fix this district? Because that's the only reason we're going up to Magnet.
In your opinion, is, will money, is money what's needed to fix the district?
You're really, this entire state is struggling to equitably fund their schools. There's a case right now, CCJEF versus RAL, trying to equitably fund the schools by the constitution of the state. And this is our chance to get closer to where we need to be. Our teachers, the union pay scales are below what, you know, nearby towns have. We were in an urban district. We have needy kids. We should be paying our teachers what they're worth because they're working much harder with the kids that we have here. There's all kinds of things that we need to do within our district using that new money.
Yeah.
And I need to see to it that it's done transparently and to genuine improvements like lower class sizes so that our district improves genuinely instead of just by test scores.
So, there's a few reforms you just mentioned there, lower class sizes and standardized tests as far as that goes. Getting the test scores up or would you be advocating for, would you advocate for some sort of reformation of the whole standardized test system?
Yes, well, that system itself is discriminatory and not necessarily by race because now it's not about race anymore when it comes to education, inequality. It's about household income. It's about economic inequality. The kids that have more money at home, they, by, you know, plenty of research says, if you have more money at home, you have more opportunity, your test scores will be higher. They have directly linked household income to test scores. So, what do you know, urban districts, they have a lot of poor, you know, households. 94% of our, by Superintendent Fisher, he said 94% of our students in our district qualify for free or reduced lunch based on federal poverty guidelines. There's a reason our test scores are low and it's not because our schools are failing, not because our teachers, our administrators, et cetera.
So, it's a failure of the metric, not necessarily the methods?
Well, it's like the, I mean, a lot of people like to say that, you know, education should be run like a business. Because, you know, you run like a business, you run it lean, you know, all about profit or, you know, you do it in such a way, you're going to get a great product if it's competitive. But then, you know, you come back to reality and you say, well, if you gave us product that was reliable and always the same, yeah, you're going to always get the same outcome. But product in these business terms is kids.
Yeah.
Every single kid is different. Every single kid comes from a different household with a different income, with a different family makeup, this many brothers or sisters, maybe a father, maybe not, maybe a mother, maybe not, maybe a place to sleep or not.
Right.
The product is not always the same. You can't call education a business.
Right.
So, it's, a lot of it is outside. It's systemic. It's our city and it's our families and it's the homes. What we have to do is do our best to supplement and do our best within the education system to support those families the best we can because it's not about helping necessarily, you know, we're not going to like dole out welfare to or more money to the families. But we're going to, we need to do things that support our children.
Right.
Every single child in the same exact way.
Okay.
So, every kid needs to have the same opportunity as a suburban kid out there in the wealthy districts.
So, you're saying it's not necessarily a matter of amounts of money coming into the system, but more about how the money is spent, what methods are used to instruct the child, the children, that matter more than just buckets of money?
Right. Yeah. Too many times we're, you know, we have cronyism, we have companies that are strong along with, say, superintendents that are proven to be just failures, proven to be erroneous.
Do you have examples of that?
One program that Dr. Fisher brought with him from Fall River called Achieve 3000. It uses a type of measurement for reading called a Lexile score. This Lexile score was proven to be erroneous by a very well-known renowned researcher saying, well, you know, this book over here, while many English teachers will tell you that that's a harder book and we put it later on in the school year, it gets a lower score. Then one over here where they would say this is an easier book and they put it earlier, so this is a higher score. So, all they do is just fudge the, oh, you're reading this book and it has this score and so you get a low score on your reading exam because you're taking a test. It's another test and it's another big piece of data. Then they give you the other text. It's easier. You get a higher score. And hey, look at that. You improved. Look at, oh my gosh, you improved so much. Way to go.
So, the improved test scores by lowering the bar?
By manipulating the bar. Yeah. And these aren't even the state exams that they look at. They're separate. It's just...
Who decides, who decides what the curriculum's going to be?
The company.
The company? All right. And the company's name was Achieve 3000?
Yep.
That's the name of the corporation? And they operated in Fall River?
Well, they, I'm not sure, they're headquarters, you know, their business headquarters, but they did, they were paid by the Fall River District when Fisher was there. And he, you know, he used them. And then when he came here, what do you know, we're using them in our schools, in our high school.
That's Fisher. So, there seems to be some sort of correlation between Fisher and Achieve 3000?
Yes.
Interesting. So, that'll require some further research on our part.
That'd be the first, you know, one of the first priorities of the Magnet District, the funds coming in, genuine improvements instead of going to, say, Achieve 3000 or more data or just computer programs sitting our kids in front of them like what we're doing in our elementary schools with extended learning time.
So, if, say, you know, you're granted suddenly the powers of the Special Masters, Superintendent and the Board of Ed all rolled into one and you could institute, say, a series of changes, what would you, what would you do differently? Like, how would you restructure this school district?
Well, first of all, I mean, if we had the money, if we didn't need to go to Magnet, then we wouldn't go to Magnet. But that's the reality of where we're living in.
The money is hinged to the Magnet program.
Correct. So, say, we're all Magnet and we have the money. If we could, I would like to get rid of the lottery system. That is a requirement from the state that if you have a Magnet, you have to have a lottery.
Okay.
And so, it's, I win an education instead of I deserve, I have the right to an education.
What happens to those who don't get into a Magnet school?
They get their second pick or their, you know, whichever one will take them. And it's like, hey, I applied for the performing arts one, but they ran out of New Londoners and now the rest of the seats are for out-of-towners. So, I'm going to the STEM school instead.
Interesting. This seems rather arbitrary.
It's unfortunate for the local population. Because, you know, a lot of people move to where they want to go to school. Or a lot of families. That's what used to drive a lot of realty, you know, property sales. So, I would do that. In place of standardized tests, we would use, I mean, teachers test all the time. They have their own testing within the classroom. That's perfectly fine. That's great. But when you have a test from the state, it's a one-size-fits-all. Everyone needs to hit this mark. The teachers in the classroom, they can tailor their tests to different kids. Like, I have a kid that is still learning English. He's probably not going to get this same test as everyone else. He's probably going to get one that may have some help on it or maybe he'll have an aide to help him with that test where we may not have an aide right now. But what we replace the standardized test with is a performance assessment. So, it's a portfolio. You're not bubbling in. You're not doing the same thing for everybody. It's, you have a portfolio over the entire year. You have these projects to work on.
Right.
And it's continuous and they put on presentations. You can do PowerPoints. You can do a diorama. You can do clay. You know, essays, you know, a comprehensive approach to take care of that kid in the way that they're able to do it instead of, I mean, tons of kids, you know, they just can't, they can't sit down there bubbling.
Right. So, the onus would be on the teachers to have a connection with the students in such a way that they would issue the students some sort of test or review that would challenge the child on their grasp of the knowledge or concept at hand, but would be tailored in such a way that the child could use their skill set, their natural aptitude to communicate that knowledge back to the teacher.
Right. The student's unique abilities because every student, there's like 12 different, you know, intelligences.
These are like archetypes of some sort?
Right. It's like you learn, you learn better through hearing. You learn better through visual. You learn better with emotional.
Okay.
Many different types. And it's, you know, every kid is different. So, some kids, they want to cut things out and make a collage.
Right, right.
Some kids are able to write it out and totally express themselves through word. Some kids want to make a movie or, many different things, drawing things.
Oh, that sounds like the school I would like to have gone to.
They have it in a few schools, I mean, in New York, New York State.
Are there examples of this? Yeah, whereabouts?
It's like performanceassessment.org or dot com. And they have a couple of schools doing it and it's like detailed out. This is what the kids do and it's in different sections.
Nice. All right. Well, getting back to the more practical aspect. And, you know, brevity being the soul of wit or whatever the saying is. The main issues at play here in this election. What do you see those main issues as and how does your candidacy address those? You mentioned transparency.
You could say budget with the money coming in.
Those two are kind of tied together to track the money. Now, restructuring the assessment process for standardized testing, is that a realistic possibility for this district? Is it even on the table?
You know, honestly, because, just because of the way politics works, not really.
Okay.
For a district such as Madison, possibly. Right now, Madison is dissenting against the new teacher evaluation or educator evaluation system to where they don't link teachers' evaluations or educators, because this is administrators and teachers.
Right.
They don't link them to standardized test scores.
Okay.
That's what the state wants everybody to do. But they submit saying, no, we're not going to and we want a waiver. And they're a wealthy district.
Is that, and then is that something that's in play right now? New London School District is being pressured to do that?
They were pressured and they did do it.
They did it?
Yep. And mostly because it threw intimidation. We knew it was coming. The board knew it was coming. But they didn't get the document until a few days before the board meeting.
Is that something that you would advocate a repeal of or resistance to? Or is there any recourse to try to correct that?
Yes, we can pass a new one and then send it to the state and say, you know, this is what we want to do. And, you know, the state can bat you down, but you can, I mean, there's, the local districts have so much power that the Board of Eds in each local district have so much power that they don't use.
Right.
I mean, you are the people on, I mean, you're not necessarily on the deck plates, as they say in the Navy, but you are right there in the middle of your district and you know what your district needs.
Yeah.
The state Board of Education feels so far away from every board. I mean, I go there and I do public comment and it's just like a cricket, you know, a ghost town. They didn't even hear me. But they have so much power and they need to speak out. If you want to change as a board and, you know, and it's up to the state to do it, you need to go out there, put it in the media, you know, say, I am this board member and this is what we need to do. Or this is what I think we need to do.
Be unafraid.
Right.
Yeah. With the change to the Magnet School District, that is something that's already in the pipeline that's happening. Is that going to remove a good bit of this local control? Is that going to challenge the Board of Ed's ability to manage the district in regards to the state's jurisdiction, the state's money, the power that purse strings?
When it comes to the state influence, right now it's only the Special Master. Once he leaves, then theoretically, it should be back to us. But because we're becoming an all-Magnet district, because we're going to be bringing, excuse me, bringing in so many out-of-towners, we're going to become a regionalized district. So, if you think about that, kids are going to be coming from, students are going to be coming from all over the place. I mean, a wide, you know, range. Those parents need to have a say.
Yeah.
Who's going to advocate for them? Who's going to be, you know, the board to represent them? So, they're talking about a regional board. And I ask questions about that because what does that mean? Does that mean they're going to be in charge of this district? Or are they going to be on top of our board? What's going to happen there?
Might this be an opening for a county-based school system?
Possibly. I mean, that's an idea that I haven't, you could say, vetted to see how viable it would be.
Yeah.
But mostly because of its unlikely at this moment.
Yeah.
I have heard of it. I've heard of other things like even, you know, taxing education separately. So, it's a separate bill and people can go to the Board of Ed. When the Board of Ed wants to raise taxes to, you know, fund their school district from local property taxes, the people go there and they fight probably just as hard as they do at the city council, you know.
Right.
But instead of the city council just saying, here's a number, work with it.
Yeah.
The board is there and they debacle back and forth about it and then the people go to the board instead of the city council.
Right.
Because right now, the people go to the city council and they say, well, this is messed up with the budget. This is messed up the budget. We need to fix this, that and the other. And they're like, they just go, shrug, you know, we can't do anything. We just give them a number. You should talk to the board.
So, people can only interact with the city council directly in regards to their concerns about the budget?
Well, they can do both, but they only do it at the city level. Like, that's where the only momentum for budget debate is, is in the city council level. And all they do is give a number.
All right.
They say yes or no on a certain number and they need to go to the board and be like, this is what we need to do.
Gotcha.
Which is what the New London Advocates did.
Yeah. And you've been a member of the New London Advocates for how long?
They started, I think, in March. They kind of like loosely formed. And by around August, I was meeting with them.
This is March of 2013?
Of '12.
Of 2012.
Right. Right before the last budget. And so, by August of '12, I was meeting with them and we have our, we have our steering committee of about seven people that juggle in and out because, you know, energy and family and, I mean, we still, we're all, just about all parents. We have one, like, say, community member. We have kids and we have lives and jobs and...
Right. There's a lot to juggle.
We have those seven members and then we have public meetings. And so, people keep abreast. We have our Facebook page. So...
All right. So, back to the bullet points. And looking to kind of pull it all back in here. Transparency and accountability in regards to budget and money concerns. What would be another, what is another campaign item that you've...
It would be increasing the community involvement, parent involvement, teamwork between the school and home. It is not, you know, a secret that more parent involvement improves student achievement. And again, I don't mean just test scores, but it does improve test scores. Getting our parents just to, you know, have an open dialogue with the teacher. Hi, hey, this is how you can get ahold of me, you know, at the end of the school day. Something happened with my kid and you think I should know. Maybe they're not going to tell me when they come home. You can text me. You can email me. Usually it's email.
Right.
Or you can give me a phone call. Things like that are very important.
Seems fairly intuitive, think about it. But, you know, having been a substitute teacher myself, I can see how that's easily lost and has been lost.
And it can be very intimidating for a teacher to try to talk to parents at home. You don't know, maybe they only speak English. Maybe they only speak Spanish.
Right.
Maybe they speak Creole. Maybe they speak Arabic. Who knows what they speak?
Yeah.
But you gotta, but there needs to be a connection somehow. I mean, from behavioral to, you know, cleanliness to hungry, not getting snacks when they're supposed to have snacks at the school or, I mean, brought in. There's so many things that need just a little communication.
Right.
And it'll help out the teacher and it'll help out the child.
If another reason than, you know, putting that child's situation in context for the teacher.
Right.
So, that when the teacher's dealing with the child, they understand a bit of what that child is going through in life so that they don't become another harsh factor. They become a supporting factor.
Like disconnected, like the kid just looking at the teacher, like, you have no idea what I'm going through.
Right.
And then they just kind of like shut down.
Yeah.
So, that includes, you know, increasing our ability to translate. Our ability to, I mean, we have a majority of, you know, of the second language students and families out there. Majority of them are Spanish-speaking. Over 30% of our students go home to a household that is either half or full Spanish-speaking.
Right.
We need to increase our ability to bridge that gap there. We need to involve our Spanish-speaking parents and families in the BTOs, in our school, in the classrooms, in the board meetings. And so, I mean, we have alliance funds that we're getting right now. That's paying for a communications manager, director. Why can't we have someone to translate all our documents?
Who is the communications director?
That's Julianne Hinkle.
Oh, okay. That's right. We talked about her last time. I'll give her a call at some point. All right. So, the, another campaign point?
One more would be the, it's more we could say, I don't want necessarily to use the... word progressive because for some reason Republicans have a big hesitation to that.
Progressive has become pejorative.
Yes.
As liberal was back in the eighties and, you know, whatever. It's, yeah, label, label, label.
Right. But I think progressive is probably the right term to use for the types of.
Innovative, perhaps?
Innovative is a little rocky too because they use that within this corporate education reform behemoth that's really coming, laying a big shadow on every urban district, basically. Why is it that every urban district seems to end up with appointed or half-appointed board of educations? Why can't they have local control? Why is it that almost every urban district gets Teach for America teachers? Why do they get Teach for America cronies, you could say, coming up into administrators using the Education Pioneers Program, which we instituted in our district quietly this past year?
Okay.
So it's a progressive.
Right, right. So your counter to that, what are you looking to bring?
I'm looking to keep our teachers local, keep our teachers in, increase or actually decrease the attrition rate. If we bring in Teach for America teachers, it will exponentially increase our attrition rate. We will be losing teachers about every two years. It's an eighty percent attrition rate after two years for all Teach for America recruits. We need to lower our class sizes, right? We need to stop standardizing everything because for some reason we are pushing a depersonalization education system. We are continually making it like a one-size-fits-all learning experience. We have scripted curriculums that our district is buying every now and then where it's teacher says this, student says this, teacher says this, student says this. And it's, you're not gonna, it's not gonna happen. It's totally not conducive to a good learning environment.
Yeah.
You're not gonna have every kid on the same step of learning every day.
So resist standardization, increase individualization. All right. Again, for the sake of brevity and this being, you know, a good, I think we should wrap it up here pretty easily. Any last, any finishing, closing statements you'd like to share with the people on the other side of that screen?
Well, I'm running an independent campaign. I'm an unaffiliated petitioning candidate. I will be on the petitioning candidate line on the ballot because I got enough signatures. I went out there and talked to the folks at the voting polls and around town and got enough signatures, I got more than double. And I have, I've always had an issue with private money funding public campaigns. So that being a big issue with the party, party issue, party topic, right? I have limited, in order to stay viable, I have limited my own political contribution or donation limit to twenty dollars per person. And I think that's well within the range of majority of people. And so if anybody thinks that I should have a larger voice, there are opportunities to donate to me. You can see my Facebook page, it has a donating button there. It would help very much. From flyers to yard signs, which I'm gonna be looking into in a minute, to, you know, getting me out to events and having big signs and talking to people. So I have a Facebook page, Jason Morris for New London. And I have my email address, jason.a.morris2@gmail.com. You can email me anytime, I'm willing to talk about anything. You can probably catch me at board of education meetings, every single one of them, I'll be there.
Well, Jason, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Best of luck to you.
Thank you very much.